On behalf of the Town of Silver City Council, I’m calling this meeting to order, and I’d like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and following that, the salute to the New Mexico State Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. Thank you, and I would like to acknowledge our town administration, our town manager, Alex Brown cannot be with us tonight, the assistant town manager, Jackie Ollea is here, our town clerk, Alfred Sadeo, our business operations manager, Randy Hernandez, our town contract attorney, Crackett, is joining us by phone tonight. We have Chief Patio with us, fire marshal, Eloy Gonzalez, and our code enforcement officers, Officer Howie, Vicky Tony, and Tom Hernandez. I’d also like to announce that our attorney and also Counselor Prince will be joining us by phone tonight. So I’d like to welcome everyone here tonight, including our media, and we welcome all of you here. Next item on agenda is number two, changes to the agenda. Do I have any changes to the agenda? No changes. Next is ceremonies, and this evening, we are honored to recognize the Town of Silver City Employee of the Month, who is our town clerk, Alfred Sadeo. So if, if the council would like to join me at the podium, and also any of his family members that have come here for this, please join us at the podium.
Throughout his time with the town, Alfred has demonstrated exceptional leadership in maintaining the town’s official records, ensuring smooth municipal operations, and fostering transparency in government processes. He is reliable, organized, and responsive to the needs of both residents and town officials. His work helps keep the town’s administrative processes running smoothly. Alfred is friendly, approachable, helpful, resourceful, and goes above and beyond, making it easier for people to navigate town services. His commitment to his role makes a difference for our community. Therefore, the nominating committee and the town management believe that Alfred deserves this recognition for the month of April 2025. Congratulations.
Mr. Sadeo, would you like to make a few comments? You may have, but please do.
Thank you, council. Mayor, I believe, Mr. Lambert, Ms. Severs, thank you guys very much. I appreciate this. It’s been great working with the council. I enjoy working every day with our town officials and employees. I think we got a good crew. We try to do the best that we can to serve our community. I know that right now, we haven’t any online that we’ll be talking about later, and hopefully that’ll expedite a lot of things with building this stuff. So, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. As mayor, it has really been a privilege and an honor to work with Mr. Sadeo all these years. He’s always on the ball, no matter what the situation is, when it comes to taking the minutes of the meeting, when it comes to publishing those minutes, and everything else that’s involved in the clerk. It’s not an easy job, and we’ve had council meetings where public input has gone on for a long time, and every one of those comments is typed out and put in the minutes. Just to give you another example, last week, the last council meeting, we had a proclamation for Nurses’ Day, and Mr. Sadeo helped them put that together, and they were so impressed that I know all of the nursing faculty at the university, this is kind of a heads up, are putting together a thank you card with all their signatures, and they wanted me to tell you publicly how much they appreciated you working with them. So, thank you. And if any of the councilors would like to make a comment, we’ll start with District One, then Three, and then Counselor Conno.
I just want to say that Alfred is a perfect example of customer service. I know that he held an office in Grant County before, but, you know, every time I’m around Alfred, he just has such an upbeat, great attitude. It’s pretty infectious, and, you know, I’m really thankful for all the things you do. One thing that I want to say is that I think our town clerk is probably the best dressed town clerk in the state of New Mexico, and I want to give thanks to his wife for that.
Counselor Snyder.
I just want to say, Alfred’s always very helpful, and if I have any questions or anything, I’m kind of not knowing which way to go in a direction, I ask a couple of questions, they get answered, and I know which way to go. And the other thing that’s always nice, we have municipal league functions, and before I even know that it’s happening, Alfred’s already got the reservations made in the hotel room, we’re signed up for the course and all. It’s really good. I appreciate all the help you do, Alfred.
Thank you. Counselor Conno.
Well, I thought we were pretty different. Sid, I appreciate all the work you do for us, and I appreciate the fact you always have a smile on your face, even when it’s something crazy we’re asking you to do, even if it’s something that’s kind of difficult, you always manage to get through it, and you always have a smile. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And the chair of the nursing department at the university also told me, I’ve never worked with someone who was so friendly and helpful before. So, once again, thank you, Mr. Sadeo. Next on the agenda is number four, proclamations, and we have none. Next is council comments, and first on the list tonight will be Counselor Conno.
Thank you, Mayor. I’d like to start by reminding everyone that this week is National Police Week. I’m starting there because one of the things our police officers did on Saturday was win the Battle of the Badges competition. So, good job to the police department. The fire department came in second, and the Grant County Sheriff’s came in third. I want to talk a little bit about Battle of the Badges. It was very successful. We had a few hundred people that showed up and participated by, you know, watching the competition, sharing in the food, enjoying the music. There are a lot of people that needed to be thanked, so I really want to do that really quick. First of all, Ms. Ollea, I think I spent more time in your office in the last two weeks than I’ve had the whole time you’ve been working here. Thank you for all your help with all the paperwork, and also to Ms. Stacy for her help with the paperwork. Clerk Sadeo and Laura Sanchez worked on the advertisement. Thank you for that. People were really happy with the ad in the newspaper. It looked really good, so thank you very much. Public Works and Facilities, of course, did all that they had to do to set up and make sure that the facilities were great for the use of them. Chief Portillo and Lambert and Sheriff Villanueva, thank you for letting your agencies be involved. Really appreciate that. Deputy Fire Chief Lloyd Vazquez, you worked so hard. Poor guy. I mean, it wasn’t just doing his normal setup stuff, it was other things that he had to do. He knows everything he did, and this event would not have happened without him. So, thank you very much. Councilors Prince and Snyder showed up to see what the event was about, which I really appreciated. Counselor Ben Como and his wife both not only showed up, but also participated. Counselor Ben Como was a judge, and he and his wife also helped with cleanup. I really appreciate the support you always give me, and Francis does, I don’t know if she’s here tonight, but thank you very much. Our other partners were Anthony Quintana of Mix and Buffalo Buds, who provided a lot of things. He did the cooking and did some stuff in the morning that we had forgotten about, but that he knows about because he does events so often. HMS provided our wheelchairs that we used. Anthony and Annette Berovich provided the cornhole that was played. Illusion Band provided the music. Jessica Solice from Big Brothers Big Sisters was a huge support through the whole thing. She was on the radio with us, and she did some other advertising. Eric Freeland, owner of Pieces of a Piece of Heaven Granite Memorial, which is another business on Pope Street, was very, very helpful that day. He served as a judge and helped with some last minute things that needed to be done. I’d also like to thank Senator Gabe Ramos and Representative Luisa Rasa, as well as my mother, Patricia Cano. They are providing the first place prize for that agency, and they’ll be getting that probably in a couple of weeks. And then I provided, I will provide the second place prize, as well as the MVP prize, and that prize went to Efren Canas, who is a detective with the Silver City Police Department. He was amazing. He participated in every single one of the games and just stepped up a lot, so he really earned that prize. And then the last person I want to thank is my mother, Patricia Cano, without whom none of this would happen either, because she was involved from step one. She also served the mill for the event. It was really awesome to see that there were a lot of women involved. We have women in the fire department, in the Grant County Sheriff’s Department, who all participated, so that was really cool to see. Our district attorney, Norm Willer, has already asked or actually challenged the other agencies. He’s planning to have his office involved next time, so he wants to have another one soon. And I had a district judge from Duñaná County reach out and ask for basically like a handbook of how to do this, because he wants to do the same thing in Duñaná County with their first responders, which I think is really awesome. So, thank you to everyone who participated.
Thank you. Counselor Ben Como.
Thank you, Mayor. We were asked to help Counselor Conno, my wife and I, with the Battle of the Badges, and we really enjoyed that. I was kind of taken back at how creative Counselor Conno was in putting together the obstacle course. I watched some of these people that participated, and I think everybody, especially me, even though I was not involved in it directly, I, it just kind of opened up my eyes just how much handicap people kind of struggle getting around. I don’t mean to throw you underneath a bus, June, but Juno and I almost were participants in the wheelchair. We took a spill trying to step up on a sidewalk. We didn’t get hurt, we survived, but I really appreciate you asking us to help. I thought it was a really great event. People seemed to really enjoy it. I was a little disappointed that Hila Regional EMS didn’t have their, even though they had a commitment to participate, that they didn’t show up. Maybe they’re busy, maybe they had emergency calls, whatever, but I really enjoyed that. I wanted to report that the traffic light, most of you already know, on the medium at Cerro Heights is now up and operating. I think I had somebody come to me back in February to get that repaired. I think it was taken out by an accident, so that’s not working. Just can give you an idea of how long some of these things take to actually happen. It takes a while. The other thing I did, I did attend a cemetery board meeting, I think it was last week. There was not much discussed there, except that they’re still working on a brochure so that you can navigate around the cemetery. I want to thank Jackie, our assistant manager, for doing their legwork for trying to get some traffic, some streetlights in an area that was pretty dark, so I want to thank you for that. That was also, I think that was brought to me back in January, and give you an idea, that just got done a couple of weeks ago. Let’s see. Well, another thing is, I’m thinking about a project for my Territorial Charter Day event. I don’t think I’m as creative a Counselor Conno, so I’m more of a manual kind of guy. I’ll probably do a solar project. I’m thinking about doing some kind of painting, maybe cutting or picking up something. I haven’t come up exactly what I want to do, but once school is out, I’ll probably have a little bit more time and more commitment to do that. And that’s all I have here. Thank you.
Counselor Snyder.
I have nothing tonight.
Counselor Prince.
I wish to thank Coach Sadeo for accommodating remote attendance this evening. I just had to call that for the town for mayor due to a work emergency of keeping from being there in person. I wish to thank Counselor Conno for hosting such wonderful events this past weekend. We have a number of upgrades that are going on over at City Hall, so I wish to thank all of our utility staff, as well as our IT department. I know upgrading and moving from the mainframe systems we run, our city’s water and utility going from last decade has been flawed, and so I’m very glad that this is the time to make sure to get everything in place, and I know it will be one of those upgrades that, once it’s done, we won’t even think about it anymore. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you. I would like to read a letter from the Town and Country Garden Club, and it’s to the Silver City Museum. And this will be kind of sad news for a lot of us who’ve been in Silver City for a while. It says, “Silver City’s Town and Country Garden Club is dissolving, and the remaining members have designated final distribution to a nonprofit community organization.” So, they have donated a check to the Silver City Museum. For those of you who know about the Town and Country Garden Club, over the years, they have donated thousands and thousands of dollars worth of projects to improve Silver City. So, I just want to publicly acknowledge them and thank them for all of their past work. The other thing is, this Saturday, starting at nine o’clock, at the Hila Community Foundation, I think that’s the new name, it was the Grand County, at nine o’clock, we will be having the Pick It Up and Toss No Mas community project. And so I’d like to invite anyone who’s interested to show up there at nine o’clock Saturday morning, and it generally goes until about noon. I don’t want to go into the details, but they have raised, they have picked up that project, thousands and pounds of litter and other stuff over the course of the project. And last, you’ve heard the comment about council members participating in the Territorial Charter Volunteer Project. Just a little bit of history on that. Then Mayor Mike Moronis, before he left office, co-sponsored a resolution where we would, the city would recognize Territorial Charter Day each year with different celebrations. So, when I became mayor, that’s all I had to go on. There wasn’t really any information on what kind of celebrations. And so I was talking to a couple of community citizens, Gary Staley and the Silver City Daily Press publisher, Nick Seibel, because in the initial charter, the mayor could call all able-bodied men to work one day a year improving sidewalks and streets. Well, we didn’t think that would go over too good in these days, and so they suggested volunteer projects where council members would pick a project that would improve their district or improve the town in some way, and they would sponsor that. So, we still have Counselor Ben Como, and Counselor Snyder, and Counselor Princes, and the mayor’s project coming up throughout the rest of the year. Next on the agenda is number six, approval of the minutes of the April 22, 2025 minutes. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Ben Como.
Mayor, I move to approve the regular meeting on April 22, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Snyder.
A second. Motion.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion, carriers unanimously. Thank you. Next is public input, and we have two people signed up. First on the list is Heidi Ogas.
Thank you. My name is Heidi Ogas, and I’m the current president of the High Desert Humane Society and a citizen of Grant County. There has been some talk about trying to make changes to the town’s animal ordinance to allow legal maintenance of feral cat colonies and a program called Trap Neuter and Release, or TNR. While the current ordinance does not specifically state that feral cat colonies are a violation, maintaining fat caral colonies does violate seven sections of the current ordinance, sections that were designed to protect humane treatment of animals. I’d like to share the Humane Society’s stance on the feral cat colonies. The first part of our mission statement says to promote and to provide humane and ethical treatment to companion animals. Feral cats are domesticated companion animals that are forced to live as if they were wild animals. In most colonies, the cats have no protection from the elements and are limited, have limited food supplies. They have to fight for their livelihood. The conditions of some of the feral cats that come into the shelter are horrific. Their eyes glued shut from rhinovirus so long that their eyeballs are disintegrating, affected abscesses the size of tennis balls, broken legs that have healed leaving the cat maimed and unable to defend itself, broken jaws rendering them unable to eat, ears ripped off. I don’t need to go on, I don’t think. Even PETA, People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, suggests that allowing them to struggle for survival is not a humane option. While PETA acknowledges that TNR, Trap Neuter and Release, can help prevent future generations of feral cats, they do argue that it doesn’t improve the lives of the individuals left outdoors, and it does support euthanasia as a humane option. PETA does offer strict guidelines to establish and maintain humane cat colonies. Cats are natural hunters, excuse me, therefore with limited food supply, they will hunt for their own food. This can impact natural wildlife. It’s estimated that cats kill 2.4 billion birds per year, not to mention the number of reptiles and other animals. And what about the health and safety of the people of Grant County? Although it’s rare, feral cats have been known to charge and attack people who might be treading on their territory. It happened up on Louisiana Street. Rabies is a very deadly disease. Most feral cats are not vaccinated for rabies, and if they have been trapped, neutered, vaccinated and released, they do not have enough of the vaccine to maintain their immunity. Once trapped, you will probably never trap a feral cat again. State law does require that rabies vaccinations are done annually unless it was a three-year vaccine, and that has to be given after a one-year. Recently, the county animal control officer was bitten by a feral cat, and because no owner or record of rabies vaccination was able to be confirmed, he had to begin the grooming series of rabies treatment shots. Cat feces carries bacteria and parasites that are dangerous to humans. A pregnant mother gardening in her flower bed where a cat has defecated is at risk of becoming infected with toxoplasmosis. It’s a parasite that can cross through the placenta and infect the fetus, causing serious health problems and even birth defects. It’s estimated that there are 50 million feral cats in the U.S. That’s one-sixth of the population of the people. There is just as much evidence to show that Trap Neuter and Release does work to reduce feral cat populations as there is to show that it doesn’t work. I don’t know what the solution is to stop, to control, or to manage feral cat colonies, but if and when you consider ordinance changes that might affect those cat colonies, I ask you to consider what is the most humane and ethical thing for these cats. They are domesticated companion animals forced to live in an inhumane condition. Take PETA’s suggestions, if nothing else. But foremost, please consider the health and safety of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sean Agarri. Mr. Agarri, you could come up to the microphone there.
My name is Sean Agarri, and I’m speaking on behalf of myself and all handicapped or anyone with disabilities who want to attend any functions out at Scott Park. There are many handicapped people who do not attend baseball, softball, or soccer games because of the inconveniences and the accessibilities that the fields provide, from the parking to the sidewalk and the uneven surfaces. The only true handicap accessibility parking is on the west side of the complex. However, if you want to watch games on the two bottom fields, which are the northeast and southeast fields, you have to go around on the sidewalk. The sidewalk that is provided is at an angle, uneven, slanted, and has gaps between the concrete. These are the multiple reasons why I fell last week, and also two weeks before, prior to me falling, another person falling in that similar place. The parking for the two bottom fields is either at an incline or with dirt and loose rocks. There are large gaping spaces in the concrete which provide unsafe surfaces to push a wheelchair or for me to use my motorized wheelchair. The sidewalks are about four or five inches above the ground, so we are having to lift the wheelchair up in the certain areas. My son-in-laws sometimes have to pick me up with my wheelchair to put me up on the sidewalk so I can travel to one of the fields. For soccer games, the drop on the east side of the field is about a five-inch drop, making it inaccessible. There is not enough handicap parking. However, they did just space three or more handicap signs in the south entrance of the fields, but that still doesn’t fix the problem because of the loose gravel, rocks, and loose dirt situation. It needs to be, something needs to be done in that situation, like a cement, you know, for the, for easier convenience for the people with a motorized or regular wheelchairs. To get to and from the two fields on the northwest and southwest side of the complex, the two fields on the northeast and southeast side of the complex, it is a hazard and a huge safety concern because of incline and the slope the concrete is on. And at the same time, you cannot get two wheelchairs to go, one person traveling one way and the other way, at the same time the concrete slab. I’ve had to come meet somebody and go all the way back and come back to where, back so that person can get through, and I have to, then I get to get through. My biggest concern, well, a resolution that could be a resolution for that situation on that park would be a ramp with handicapped rails from the west to the north and south fields. Also, there is no handicap railing for people walking around with canes. And my biggest concern is the handicapped accessibility that the fields do not provide, and for my safety as well as others. I’ve had to watch games with binoculars. Can you imagine watching my grandkids with binoculars out there, and then on the bottom two fields, I’d have to, you’d have to look through two different fences just to see your grandkids play. And on the other side, on the west side, I think I’d have a four-wheel drive vehicle. I’d have to get up on a hill and look down to watch my grandson and my granddaughter play with binoculars. Anyway, I have provided pictures to help you understand and demonstrate what we have to go through to be present for our families. Please take into consideration all that I have mentioned, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Agarri and Ms. Ogas, would you provide our clerk, Mr. Sadeo, with a copy of your comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next on the agenda is reports. The first report- The first report will be by Fire Marshal Eloy Vazquez.
Can there be a human okay? Good evening, Mayor Lanner, Town Council, Town Service City Staff, guests in attendance. For those who don't know me, again, in attendance, my name is Eloy Vazquez. I am the Deputy Chief of Fire Prevention for Service City Fire Department. And in the town, I'm all really known since I was a fire marshal. I come before you to give you a little fire update of what's going on in our community within same limits here in Town Silver. Our fire conditions, as you can see, we are still having prevailing winds. That's kind of unusual for this time of year to experience these wind activities. Fields are still continuing to get more and more drier. We're not anticipating any precipitation. I believe I did see somewhere possibly around mid-June is when we're looking at starting to get some, some relief in our area. I don't know how much that's going to be, you know, to satisfy our, our concerns over this, but we're just still continuing to be really vigilant, continuing to work strongly with the community, listen to everyone's concerns. March twelfth, we did enact the stage-one fire restrictions. There was four or five items that was put into place in order to protect life and property. We did have two fires that did really catch the public's attention. It brought a lot of concern and a lot of anger. We did have a fire that was started on the big ditch on Easter Sunday. This was an intentional act and it was human cause and it was an act of arson. Our firefighters from Service City Fire Department responded promptly and immediately and was able to contain them to small, three separate fires. We also did have the Bossman Fire, which burned a little bit more than ten point five acres and occurred on April twentieth. Once again, this was a, a human-caused intentional fire. Once again, an act of arson. That day, that wind could have been a lot worse, but weather conditions were in our favor. That's how we were able to stop it at ten and a half acres, a little bit more than ten and a half acres. It's, um, we did have some structures that were threatened, but no evacuations were needed. We did have a U.S. Forest Service on hand to help us combat this fire. They did an extremely well job by controlling the fire line around the perimeter and were able to do a successful knockdown as well as Cruz Service City Fire Department. We did have Tyron Volunteer Fire Rescue and Grant County Fire Chief on site that day. PNM was also in the area. We did have some high-voltage power lines and they were able to be on standby. We, you know, we want to thank every firefighters for their effort as well. On day two, we continued to do some heavy mop-up operations on the hill. It was rough and rugged. You're talking about rocks the size of baseballs all the way down to bowling balls. Terrain that could easily injure a lot of our firefighters, but everybody was saved. No injuries to report on that. We did invite Pino Santos Volunteer Fire Rescue to bring down somewhere around the four thousand five feet of wildland fire hose, which was spread out throughout the whole mountain, so they helped us out with fire operations on that. That's where we're sticking at right now. We're, we haven't really seen an increase in the fire activity so far. I would really like to thank the public for their cooperation on this. They have been so adamant on fire safety and they have a lot of concerns. They're just, everybody's so vigilant right now. It's, it's a, it's a dangerous situation that we're going to get into if we don't get some much-needed moisture in the future. What I'm going to do is probably next council meeting, I'm going to bring forward additional fire restrictions and we're going to go into stage-two fire restrictions. It's going to outline everything that's in stage-one plus more additional precautions in order to keep our community safer in Town Silver. As well as that, we're, I'm going to be meeting with Town Clerk Alfred Sadio to get a resolution written up and presented to you guys or I should say to the council and, and the mayor to review and, and hope that you guys can pass this resolution, which was going to be limiting the sales and use of permissible fireworks for the, for the thirty days, so that would go into effect May twenty-eighth and it will cover all the way until June twenty-eighth. But if fire conditions get any worse, we can actually extend that once again to just protect our community from these fires. Publics has been asking me if we can ban fireworks and not allow vendors to, to vend in our community. We are not allowed to do that. It's actually state law. So there's ways that we can work around just ensuring the safety of the public. We're working diligently, nonstop, just to make sure we have everything in place, we have a safe summer for recreational activities. I think that's all I have to report at this time. Next, like I said, next council meeting, I will be bringing forward and I'll give you a little information as far as what's going to be in tell on stage-two fire restrictions as well as any questions that I can answer for you regarding the resolution that's going to be coming to you all. Lastly, I just want to say before I turn over the questions, if we can just ask the public's part of cooperation when we have a fire emergency in any kind of area, that we ask the public to please, please stay away from the areas. We, we have a smoking area. The folks in the community like to get as, as close as possible to see what's going on, but we need the public to please stay away from these areas. Allow us to get our law enforcement EMS, fire trucks, our fire departments, there are, there are large fire trucks in the area. We can't have the public be hampering fire operations. This could be a key, a key critical factor in, in life and death situations. So we're going into the process now that if we do have a fire, we hate to do this because we're putting stress on law enforcement and limiting their availability to certain areas in the city and possibly the county, but we want to help, you know, we want to utilize law enforcement, but not have to utilize them in such a fashion that we're pulling away from that because we're just being impeded by the public, you know, impeding on our fire ground operations. So we can ask the public's assistance on that when there's a fire, just please stay away from the area. If there's questions that you may have regarding that fire, we can address at a, at a different time. But that's all I have for now, City Council. Mayor Lanner, if you guys have questions.
Any questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Mayor Lanner?
Oh. Counsel Prince?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Chief, Doctor. The fear of that's been running through the community. I do believe it's well deserved. This is my fourth year on council and the last year we were having the fires up on Bossman. The year before that, we were having the fires near the ditch. I'm hoping to send the general comments to the council that we really could force a better effort when it comes to the design and implementation of an appropriate crisis response team. We have been too lucky and relying, we only have luck for some of these emergencies not to spill over to the rest of our town. There are better processes that we could be following, especially to be able to turn the needs of that are going to mental health crises that are now beginning to threaten the town. Personally, I do not believe that more prisons is going to be the better answer for this. And when it comes to the resources that we could be marshaling, I know that we could be doing better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Fire Marshal Vazquez. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Lanner and Town Council.
Just for your information, you've noticed how windy it is and PNM has a policy that when they deem the fire hazard as a possibility, then they will shut down power to certain segments of the community. Before our meeting started, I talked to our town attorney. In case, the worst-case scenario happens and the power is shut down in here, then we'll get a motion to adjourn until this Friday at six P.M. Seventy-two-hour notice is required before we can have another meeting. Just for your information, in case that unlikely happens. Next, giving a report is Randy Hernandez, who will report on the new billing and online payment system.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As you may be aware, we are finalizing the, the new utility billing software, switching from Central Square over to MuniLink. We will be fully functional and operational beginning Monday, May nineteenth. The overall goal and intent for this upgrade was to streamline and enhance the customer experience as well as streamlining processes for our staff. Moving forward, customers will receive updated utility bills. They'll no longer receive their perforated cards. They will instead receive an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven page for their bill with containing all of the same information. But it will contain new features to make the bill paying quick and easy. All of the billing cycles and due dates have remained the same, so there will be no change in, in current customers' due dates. The great news is, is now we're going to be accepting payments online. So the bill will contain a QR code. When scanned on a cell phone or a tablet, it'll direct the customers to our online payment provider, which is PayStar. The customers then can either make a one-time payment or set up recurring payments for, for their account. The customers can also use a computer and go to the town's website. They'll direct them to that same, to that same portal and they'll be able to make the payment there. Whilst they're going to be accepting payments in person at City Hall or any of the payment drop boxes, which we would, we have one outside of City Hall as well as in the Mexico Gas Company. For in-person payments at City Hall, there will be kiosks available for customers to make a payment or set up an account for recurring payments. Of course, the customers can still use the utility billing clerks up at the counter for, for some of the payments. Moving forward, like all software conversions, we're going to experience some errors and some hiccups. So if customers feel that an error has been made on their account, please encourage, we encourage them to, to speak with utility billing supervisors so we can do some research and take a look and see if there are any corrections need to be made. Continued closure, City Hall will remain closed for the remainder of the week just so we can make some final adjustments and work on any final data input for the final transfer. We would like to send our thanks and appreciation to the public for their continued patience and understanding. Lastly, I want to give a special thanks to the staff involved in this conversion. This has not been, been an easy task. It's been long hours, long days dedicated to, to this transition. So we just want to acknowledge their hard work and dedication has not been unnoticed and we appreciate their efforts in making this a success. And that concludes my update and I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Counsel Connaught?
I just think the staff have been working so hard on this. This conversation about online billing literally started twelve years ago when Mayor Morones was the mayor. So it's, it's great to finally be at this point. I hope the public will, will be patient because I'm sure there will be hiccups just like any other, any other new thing. But I know the town staff will work hard on getting them solved as quickly as possible. So thank you again.
Give that to Alfred. Any other questions or comments? Well, we'll move right along to Agenda Item Nine, public hearings, and there are none. Next is Agenda Item Ten, unfinished business. And there are none. Next is New Business. New Business Agenda Item Eleven A is the approval slash disapproval of a trade old golf carts for new golf carts. Ms. Olae?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, in your packet you'll see a request to swap twenty-two of the old golf carts at the golf course for ten twenty-twenty Yamaha Quietec golf carts. This would be a trade straight across the board and it would allow for the current golf carts that are in use at the facility to all be cohesive. So the twenty-twenty Yamaha Quietec is what's currently being used at the golf course. So it would allow our fleet to increase the capacity because of the twenty-two that are on the ground as of now have a lot of technical issues and are sometimes out of service quite often. So this would increase the availability for golf carts. If you have any questions, I stand.
Any questions or comments? Counsel Snyder?
I noticed in the packet that they had company, it's the Yamaha company, will have training for maintenance personnel? Are we going to be able to take advantage of that?
I will defer to Len, who is our golf course director. If he can answer the question for you all.
Yes, sir. My name's Len Zemwana, the General Manager at Scott Park. Yeah, I have a pretty close relationship with the Yamaha dealership out of Albuquerque. It's, it's called Masek Golf Cars. They're the ones initially sold us the thirty golf carts that we have right now. They're two thousand twenty. When I arrived at the golf course three years ago, I, we inherited the twenty-two two thousand sixteen club car models. Those cars have, over time, been, you know, not working well. We've, we've spent about, in my time, we've spent about ten thousand dollars trying to repair them and keep them running. But since they're now nine years old, they've been breaking down a lot and we felt that the money spent would be better off than having them trade out and have ten golf carts that are in same year, same model than the thirty-car fleet that we have right now. That being said, our relationship with the Yamaha dealership is pretty close where we have a tech involved, where they offer training and/or support for us to keep those cars running.
Just to be able to take advantage of that?
Yes, yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm happy for it in the sense that we do, even though it is Albuquerque and it's a five-hour drive, but it is, it is helpful for us.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
I have a, I have a question while you're up there.
Yes.
And I don't know too much about golf courses and golf carts and all of that, but I'm just curious. Why are we going with gas-powered golf carts rather than the more energy-efficient, electric and less polluting carts?
Well, Mr. Mayor, that is a great question. At the moment, we do not have a facility that would house our electric cars. I think at some point, it would be great to offer that. We do have future plans to do something that would allow us to house electric cars, especially now that they're actually lithium. It's a lithium car now, which is about two hundred and fifty pounds lighter than the version of our electric cars that we, that we've known to, to use in the past. But at the moment, the gas cars are our, our best option based off of the availability of space and/or storage.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Ms. Olae, any other comments on this item? Okay. Next Agenda Item is Eleven D. Counsel?
We didn't vote on that, Mr. Mayor?
Pardon?
We didn't vote on that, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yeah, okay. I'm sorry. Do I hear a motion? Counsel Snyder?
I move to approve trade of old golf carts for new golf carts.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Mayor, a second. Any discussion? Any further comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadio.
Counsel Bingoma?
Aye.
Counsel Prince?
Aye.
Counsel Snyder?
Aye.
Counsel Connaught?
Aye.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Agenda Item 11B, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution 2025-16, a resolution by the governing body of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, whereby authorizing the submission of a grant application and necessary documents for the Town of Silver City to the New Mexico Department of Transportation for physical year 2025 EV infrastructure parentheses, DC fast charging grant funds, close parentheses. Ms. O'Leah?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Before you, it was a resolution to apply for available funds to install some EV fast chargers at the new Henry Villabura Morales Recreation Center. We are hoping to install some near the entrance of the building. We currently have the conduit ran, so we have, the town has put up a certain amount of expense to the project, and we're hoping to see it to fruition with this grant. If you have any questions, I will stand for them.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Council Connaught?
I move to approve of Resolution 25-16, a resolution by the governing body of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, whereby authorizing the submission of a grant application and necessary documents for the Town of Silver City to the New Mexico Department of Transportation for FY, for fiscal year 2025 EV infrastructure, close parentheses, or open parentheses, DC fast charging grant funds, close parentheses.
Is there a second? Council Ben Coma?
A second.
Any discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Council Ben Coma?
Aye.
Council Prince?
Aye.
Council Snyder?
Aye.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is Agenda Item 11C, the approval slash disapproval of bid 24 slash 25 dash two Mill Road. Ms. O'Leah?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. In your packet, you will see correspondence from our purchasing agent, Olivia Britton. Unfortunately, all of the bids that were submitted to the project exceeded the current maximum allowable construction cost, so it is the town's recommendation that all bids be rejected at this time, and the project will be advertised at a later date.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Council Ben Coma?
Mayor, I move to disapprove.
You make a motion to approve, but we voted down.
Okay. All right. I understand that. So I make a motion to approve a bid 24 slash 25 dash two Mill Road.
Thank you. Is there a second? Council Snyder?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Aye.
Council Prince?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait. The motion was to approve, so if, if we're not going to accept this bid, we should vote nay, right? Okay, Council Ben Coma?
So it's disapprove.
No. You vote nay.
Okay. Nay.
Okay. Roll call, continue?
Nay.
Council Snyder?
Nay.
Council Connaught?
Nay.
Motion fails unanimously. Next on the agenda is adjournment. This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion? Council Snyder?
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor may adjourn.